This conference will now be recorded.
Welcome to the Teasers and Elders Board of Trustees meetings. Thank you everyone for being here.
I know yesterday you showed me, because I was reading where the attachments are.
Members remote, can you please mute yourself? Thank you. All right. Okay. Let's get started with the Pledge of Allegiance and the Slith North Carolina flag.
The Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I salute the flag of North Carolina and pledge to the Old North State, love, loyalty, and faith.
So some administrative notes. If anyone wishes to make a public comment, sign up or email Patty Hall at Patty with an I dot hall at NCTreasure dot com. Note, the meeting is being recorded. I'll do post it online with all the board materials as well. I guess I already did this, but I'd ask you to mute your phone on our computer if you're not speaking. We take a roll call by name after all votes. Unless there's objection, I'm looking at the second to be counted as guest votes. Board members who are joining us remotely must leave the meeting at any point. Please announce your departure or return. Please announce your return as well. Those items will be recorded. Likewise, if you're remote, state your name before speaking. Finally, texts or other recorded communications between board members during the meeting, even on personal devices, are public records to the extent that they concern the meeting. We'll now do a roll call for attendance.
Brad Reiner.
President.
Jeffrey Winston.
Here.
John Edehausen.
Present.
Joshua Smith.
Here.
Lynn Brewer.
President.
Margaret Reader.
Here.
O Green.
Here.
Oliver Holly. Hurley. Stacy Meyer.
Here.
And then Yaman, who is not attending today. Bob Zing.
Here.
Jeff Morse.
I'm here, by the way. I'm going to have to leave at 10:30 and return at 11:00, so I thought I'd just make that notification now.
Thank you, sir. Crystal Surtin.
Here.
And Nancy Vaughn.
Here.
And Wilson Weaver. Okay. Mr. Weaver will be joining us. And he will be here.
Okay. Moving on.
I didn't hear my name called.
I'm sorry, Avro Hindor.
Sorry.
I had two cheese going.
So moving on to ethics awareness. Please take a moment to review the agenda. Does anyone present have an actual potential or the appearance of a conflict of interest in the matter at hand? None? In the appendix, you'll notice the Boards and Commissions Administrator Procedure of Transcendence and the Cule Form, which is the internal Department of State Treasury procedure we will follow if a board member recuses themselves for a different action. The Ethics Act requires the board member to submit the reason for the recusal writing, and the procedure provides a form a board member may use. If there are any questions, please contact the Boards and Commissions Administrator or Tim Melton for assistance. Moving on to SEI. Please review the SEI evaluations and materials. The Ethics Act requires that any conflicts of interest identified in evaluations be recorded in the meeting minutes. These evaluation letters will be made a part of today's minutes to serve as a periodic reminder of those conflicts that were identified by the Ethics Board. Are there any questions on any of those? Very none. Move on to swearing in first.
It's two swearing in. We're going to swear in.
Superintendent Green, let's do this right here.
The other members have been sworn privately. I've got the swearing in on the way today.
Let's open the flag. Do you remember a law that you will support and make in the United States, the Constitution laws of North Carolina not inconsistent therewith, and that you will face the discharge duties of your office as trustee of the supplemental retirement report to help you go? Thank you.
Just look at me. Thank you, sir.
All right. As the newly elected Superintendent for Public Instruction, Melody joins the Board of the Teachers and State Employees Retirement System and the Local Government Employees Retirement System, I was replacing Catherine Truitt. Superintendent Green, would you like to say anything?
Good morning, first of all, to everyone. I look forward to certainly learning a lot and figuring out how we can be supportive of individuals who are beneficiaries of the retirement systems. I look forward to the work.
Thanks so much for your service.
Mr. Treasurer, we did not call the role Homer Dearman. Is Homer present? Homer's not present.
Okay. Thank you. As the new Director of the Office of State and Human Resources, Stacy Meyer joins the Board of Trustees in the State Employees Retirement System and fills the role previously held by Barbara Gibson. Director Meyer, would you like to say anything?
Yes, I just want to say I'm really looking forward to this work. I appreciate the lengthy orientation that I got, and I'm very excited to be part of the decisions of this board.
Thank you for your comments, and we're eagerly anticipating your service on the board. Crystal Surtin was appointed by the Governor to the Board of the Local Government Employees Retirement System as replacing Melody Reagan. Sir, would you like to say anything?
The only thing I'd like to say is basically repeating what we've already heard from the other two. I appreciate the opportunity to serve and look forward to learning and growing with the board.
Thank you for your services, Mel. Okay, move on to the consent agenda for Teachers and State Employees Retirement System. As you'll see, we have the minutes for the October 2024 meeting on that agenda, the adoption of resolution appreciation for the service of Ms. Catherine Truitt on that agenda, the adoption of resolution appreciation for the service of Ms. Barbara Gibson on that agenda, and the acknowledgement received of the financial report for Aspire Trade High School on that agenda. Are there any requests from the State Board to move an item from the consent agenda to the regular discussion items? Hearing no requests, the consent agenda items for the State Board as acknowledged. Are there any objections to adopting the consent agenda?
So ordered.
So ordered. Moving on to the consent agenda for the local board. The consent agenda for the local board consists of the meeting minutes for the October 24, 2024 meeting, adoption of the resolution appreciation for the service of Ms. Catherine Truitt, and adoption of the resolution appreciation for the service of Ms. Melody Reagan. Are there any requests from the local board to move any of these items from the consent agenda to the regular discussion items? Hearing no requests, the consent agenda items for the local board are adopted. So moving over to Retirement Systems Director Watts for the Public Pension Coordinating Council Awards.
I'm going to stand and take the pressure off my brain a little bit and make a couple of comments. First of all, thank everyone for being here and for serving on this board. This board is a big deal and is a thing that's very close to my heart and has been throughout my career in state government. I'm fortunate to come back to the retirement divisions like home. I've spent 10 years in the retirement division, a few years out, and now back here and get to work with you good folks and with an unmatched team within state government, 191 people that I think have the best attitude and with very compassionate approach to any service, public service that you can imagine. That being said, I get to present, which is fortunately an annual success story for us, but it's a story worth telling every time. And one reason it's worth telling, the candy we put on the table for you today to make it help you make it through the whole two hours, is cola flavor. Because I will tell you, it is our aspiration to provide colas and benefits for us. And one of the ways we do that is to make sure that we stick to our knitting, if you will, in doing our job. And the Public Pension Coordinating Council awards are a way to recognize that we are on the correct path to do funding and administration systems properly and consistent with our peers across the country. And they're also a reminder of how we can do that, so that we can stick to those. So the Pension Coordinating Council is our three professional organizations, National Council of Employee Retirement Systems, National Council of Teacher Retirement, and National Association of State Retirement Administrators. We're together to develop an annual survey of systems you agree to anticipate, and there are two awards for each system. You can have an administration award, which includes everything like customer service, number of handbooks, all the things that we do day in and day out that we kind of don't think twice about it because we've done it for a long time. Those are all very important for members or retirees and protect the legal status of the system and to protect the ability to function on a day-to-day basis. We shouldn't undersell that because it's very, very important. And our operations team, Ron and Courtney and Tanya, we'll let you some more later when they come present, but that's the part of this that they run day in and day out. The other piece of this is the funding. And so the General Assembly provides the funding for the state system, local employers provide it for the local system. But these boards, you guys, have the most important authority that you exercise is setting the liabilities, determining what those liabilities should be and what we have to fund towards. That happens every five years. That is called the experience review, and that's happening this year. And that sets up the entire conversation for all of how we're funded. And we are blessed that we're able to follow the funding standards for every single one of our plans that are eligible for these awards, because it goes down into which actuarial cost methods do you use, what standards do you use, how do you fund it, do you try to fund the art, do you set the right targets? And so we set out. We didn't always get these awards. We set out a course to make sure that we were going to get these, meet all those standards. We standardized all the actuarial assumptions across the systems, and we put them at the gold standard. We chose the best way to do it, the most responsible way to fund the systems, and then we put funding policies in place on top of that, which is board has adhered to and supported, that will make sure that as long as we stick to our knitting, that we will eventually generate colas for the benefit improvements because we're doing it the right way. And that's not to say that we won't make mistakes, because any organization can make a mistake along the way, but if you stay to the process that's laid out in the policies that we put in front of ourselves, then the process can be self-correcting. You can recover from something that's in a self-correcting process. And that's what these awards represent to me, that we are doing the right thing, following the right procedures, and we're sticking to it. And I want it to be a constant reminder, it's a treasury, you get the ceremony, the stack of those, you can get hung outside the door and.
We're going to need new walls. They've got so many of these at this point. And I'm very proud of the organization that you, all of you, have built to honor for us to get recognized nationally over and over again. It's a credit to the board, it's a credit to all the staff here doing that. So we will find more wall space, so keep at it. All right. Sam, over to Patrick Kinlaw. There you are. For the policy compliance update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, everyone. My name is Patrick Kinlaw. I'm the Director of Policy Planning and Compliance for the Retirement Systems. Our team works to ensure the long-term health and sustainability of the retirement systems. We have several updates for you this morning, which are here on page one on the screen, and we'll try to get through the first five quickly and spend a little time on number six. The first one, Sam already covered, the Public Pension Coordinating Council Standards Awards. So we'll move on to item number two. One of the responsibilities of our team is to keep track of legislative proposals and legislative enactments. You might remember that in October, Taylor Matty, our Policy Development Analyst, was here, and he presented to you a memorandum summarizing all the legislative acts for 2024 up until October 4th that had any impact on the retirement systems or the state health plan. Today, in the appendix to the meeting materials, we've put a memorandum that includes an addendum describing some laws enacted after October 4th. One of those laws put some appropriation toward the North Carolina National Guard Pension Fund for this current fiscal year. As the board had requested last January, increased that appropriation from $0 to $1.1 million. And it reduced the appropriations to the judicial and legislative retirement systems by about the same amount, but those appropriations are still at least what the board recommended last January, so it was a good outcome for the retirement systems. Also, just to highlight in that addendum, a couple of the Hurricane Helene relief legislation bills included some provisions that our department had some input on. One of those was to create some temporary flexibility for retirees to return to work in positions that are necessary for hurricane recovery. And another one was to give our members some flexibility on timelines for filling out forms and other actions that they have to take to maintain their benefits with us if they were impacted by the hurricane. So that's the legislative activity update. Item number three is a little bit of a potpourri, just to run through a few items in your appendix. One of them is a memorandum from Director Watts about the reemployment earnings limitation for 2025. This is for retirees of the retirement systems who come back to work in the same retirement system, but in a position that doesn't require them to earn membership in the retirement system. So for example, they might be part-time, temporary employees, contractual service. They're allowed to earn up to a certain amount of earnings from that employment without an interruption to their retirement benefit. That amount increases every year with inflation, and the limit on what they can earn increases every year with inflation. And the memo from Director Watts describes that in this calendar year 2025, it's going to be $42,160 that they can earn, or 50% of their pre-retirement salary. If that's greater, they can earn up to that amount, and those amounts increase with inflation every year. Just a reminder, in order to retire in the first place, the employee cannot have any pre-arrangement to come back and work for an employer in the retirement system, and they have to observe a waiting period where they perform no work at all, which is one month for the local system, six months for the state system. And we always like to make sure to emphasize that whenever we can, so it helps people stay on the right side of those rules. The appendix has a link to the State of North Carolina's 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, which was published in December. If you look at that report, note number 12 describes the effect of retirement plans on the state's finances for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. There's also several tables of required supplemental information near the back that contain details about the retirement systems. Our department staff did not publish that report, but we provided lots of information to the Office of the State Controller, who published the report. So if you have any questions about it, we'll be glad to try to answer them or direct you to the right people. The appendix also contains a financial report from Aspire Trade High School. This is a charter school that joined teasers, the state retirement system, provisionally for their first year of operation, which was the 2023-24 school year. They were allowed to join provisionally, and then at the end of their first school year, this board allowed them to remain in teasers, contingent on reviewing and approving their financial report for their first year. We just received the financial report. It's in your materials. Staff is going to review it, and we anticipate discussing it with you at a future meeting, so you can make a permanent decision.
We really would like you to take a close look at that. It'll be probably a robust discussion at your April meeting, whether to allow that provisional membership or to convert that provisional to permanent or to disallow it.
As a reminder, those are all two choices.
The only two choices will be to allow them to participate permanently as an employer or to prospectively only end their participation in teasers. The last one in item three is a notice of satisfaction of lien from Kip Gaston. Kip Gaston is a charter school that participated in teasers from 2001 to 2021, so 20 years. They voluntarily withdrew from teasers in 2021. They had a withdrawal liability they had to pay of a little over $5 million, and they agreed to pay, as allowed by law, they agreed to pay half of it immediately and the other half over a three-year period. And during that three-year period of installments, teasers held a lien on the school's real property. When Kip Gaston finished paying off their liability in 2024, that lien was released, and so this is just a legal notice in your materials that the lien has been discharged and released. Moving on to item number four, an update on rulemaking. There are five administrative rules, which was two for the State Board and three for the local board that these boards approved in October. Those administrative rules went before the Rules Review Commission on December 19th, and all of them were approved. They all became effective January 1st, and they are now entered in the North Carolina Administrative Code. So that was a good, smooth process, and I want to acknowledge Taylor Matty again, our Policy Development Analyst, who does great work in this area, and attorneys who also supported our work in this area and these boards. And just one note on that item in the appendix, there is a little bit of a typo. One of the rule citations at the very end says .0405. It should say .0505. I only mention that because I know you're all about to point it out. For item number five, just a very brief note, there has been some activity and litigation in the past quarter. Most of that litigation is still ongoing, and so our attorneys anticipate giving you a more complete update on it in closed session at a later meeting. That brings us to item number six, which is titled Introduction to Later Agenda Items. Our goal with this part of the meeting is to just remind you of some concepts before some of the agenda items later in the meeting. We're pleased to be joined this morning by Beth Wiley and Mike Ribble, who are behind me from Gallagher. Gallagher is the consulting actuary to the boards. And later this morning, Beth and Mike will present you with updated projections of the funded percentages and the employer contribution rates over the next several years for both the state system and the local system. And those projections are meant to update their previous work from October for one piece of information, and that one piece of information is what we now believe the investment return during 2024 was. Our Investment Management Division has estimated for us, subject to refinement, that the return for calendar year 2024 was 7.4%. There is a report for each board in the appendix called An Investment Report. There's a state one and a local one. Some of you might recall that last January, the boards asked that these reports be included in January meeting materials, like the one we're having today. And last April, we reviewed what those reports would look like. So this is the first one we've actually published. The investment reports might tell you a little bit more about the 7.4% return and what it means in context. But what I might say about that is that these boards assume that the investments can earn 6.5% in every year. So if the investments earn 6.5% in every year, that is neither good news nor bad news. That is just the expectation. Whenever we find out what the actual investment returns were, they have to be compared to that 6.5% benchmark. If we look at the last three calendar years, 2022 was about a negative 10.4%. 2023 was positive 10.1 or so. 2024, we now know, was positive 7.4 or so. So when you look back to that 2022 year, the negative 10.4, that has to be compared to what the board thought could be earned, which was 6.5 positive, and that's a difference of about 17%. That really, that year did represent a setback on the funding plan for both the state and the local system. And the two years since then have both beat the expectation of 6.5%, but not by enough to make up for what happened in 2022. So the upshot of all this is that, as you'll see, Beth and Mike will probably say more about it, but we're still on a path of increasing costs for the next several years. And the 2024 investment return slightly improved the details of that path, but we're still on that path. This process of getting projections from Gallagher, like the one today, is very important to your decision-making, your informed decision-making as boards. And that's because there's only two ways to pay for benefits from the retirement systems. One is to use the money that's already in the system from what we put in and earned on investment returns. The other, to the degree that money isn't there, is to collect contributions from members and employers in the future. And so this process every year, including this projection you're about to see, helps you understand where we are in terms of the money we have and the money we need to collect in the future. And there's always that trade-off. It's always changing based on real investment returns. In the reports that Gallagher gave you at your last meeting, they informed the boards that both the state and the local systems have unfunded accrued actuarial liabilities. And that means that the assets in the systems are not yet enough to support 100% of the benefits that have already been promised and earned by employees and retirees. The shortfall there is about $11 billion for the state system and about $5 billion for the local system. The main reason that employer contribution rates today are as high as they are is because of the need to get more assets into the systems to cover that shortfall. All of Gallagher's projections that they will share today are based only on the benefits that have already been promised, and they do not assume that any new benefits will be added in their projections. One question that the boards consider every year is whether there have been investment gains sufficient to be dedicated toward a benefit increase. Gallagher stated in their October 2024 reports that there were no actuarial investment gains as of December 31st, 2023, that could support either a recommendation by the State Board or a decision by the local board of a permanent benefit increase or a one-time supplement for retirees. Also, in their October 2024 reports, Gallagher went ahead and estimated what investment return would have to be achieved in 2024 to say that there were investment gains at the end of 2024. And they gains at the end of 2024. And they estimated that it would have to be about a 16% return. And what we actually saw in 2024, 7.4, fell short of that. So the conclusion from that is that there are not sufficient actuarial investment gains to say that there are investment gains that could be dedicated toward benefit improvements for retirees at this time. Before we leave this overview, we wanted to move on to page two.
Excuse me. I do have a quick question.
Is this, is this a good time, or should I wait till later?
That was fine, but who's speaking?
This is Nancy Vaughn.
Thank you. Please go ahead, Miss Vaughn.
So, you know, being a mayor and hearing a question often from our retirees about a COLA, I just want to make sure I'm going to give them the correct explanation on why they're probably not getting one and why they haven't gotten one. And that is primarily due to a $5 billion shortfall in the local system, which would mean that the local municipalities would have to pay to give their municipalities a COLA, and that we have more retirees in the system and we have fewer paying in at the current time. Is that basically correct?
Yes, Mayor Vaughn. This is Patrick Kinlaw. I agree with, I agree with what you said.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So on page two, we'd just like to say a little bit more about where we are in the timeline for some important reviews that are going to be happening this year and within the next year. There are a lot of assumptions that the actuaries, Gallagher, have to make and use in their calculations. They study all of these. They provide, they present recommendations, and the board approves them. This typically happens once every five years as part of what Sam mentioned. It's called an experience study. And the 6.5% investment return is probably the most visible assumption that the boards have to establish. But there are other ones, lots of other ones. How long will people continue working in their jobs? What are their compensation increases going to be? How long will they live? And so forth. There's many different assumptions that have to be made. And the last experience study was conducted in 2020, so it has been five years, so it is time. The last experience study, because it was conducted in 2020, was studying the time period before the pandemic and was based on conditions at that time and in the five years prior. So this experience study that Gallagher will be conducting this year is going to be the first one that incorporates the workforce patterns and life expectancies and everything else from the world. We expect that, as you can see on this timeline, that in October of 2025, that's the likely timing for when Gallagher will be presenting the results of their experience study. And then January of 2026 is the likely timing for when the boards would approve and adopt new actuarial assumptions and methods. We talk about assumptions and methods. I want to mention real quickly the methods part of that. We talked about how there's an $11 billion shortfall for the state system, $5 billion for the local system. To really state it simply, what actuarial methods do is they say, how, now that we know there's a shortfall, how are we going to systematically close that shortfall? How quickly? Using what math? And this is where we get into things like the 12-year amortization period that some of you may remember or be familiar with, the smoothing of investment assets, the five-year smoothing of investment, of investment returns, and some of these methods that come into play. And the actuaries do look at those things as part of their experience study and make recommendations. So all of this is open to review this year.
If I may, just add one point. And part of what I was leading you toward with the conversation in the Public Pension Standards Awards is sticking to the knitting. This is the process. This is an old process. There's been lots of conversation, folks wanting to go out of cycle or pick one assumption or one method and focus on that and say we're going to change that. Our encouragement to the board is to stick to the, to the old process. And that is an old process to review it every five years, and it's exactly what we're doing. It all gets reviewed together, because one thing may go positive, one thing may go negative, and they cancel each other out, or you may find out there's a positive surprise overall or a negative surprise overall. But until we do the work and do the study and follow the process, we don't know the answer. So that's what Patrick and our in-house actuary and our out-of-house actuaries from Gallagher are the best at, and that's making sure that we get it all done and looked at.
There's one document in your appendix today that really underscores the importance of all this, and that's a report from GRS, which is an actuarial firm that the Office of the State Auditor hired to review the work of Gallagher. And also, they reviewed the work of the actuary for the state health plan to look at their assumptions and methods and calculations. And even though we're not the agency that engaged GRS to do this review, we were very happy that they found the assumptions and methods used in the valuation are reasonable. I think that the fact that we stick to our knitting, in Sam's words, is a really critical factor in getting that kind of favorable review from an actuarial firm studying these processes. And not just the fact that we do an experience study every five years, but the quality of that study, the boards actually acting on that study and not deviating from it when it becomes convenient to deviate in one little way. I think all those contribute to another actuary being able to look at it and say that they're reasonable. And we can imagine the difficulties that might be created if the state auditor's actuary didn't feel that the assumptions and methods were reasonable. The other thing I may note on this timeline is something called the ECRISPs and SCRISPs, which many members of these boards are very familiar with from setting them in the past. These are more recent innovations for the retirement systems, and what they are, are their policies that the boards have set for the retirement systems: state system, local system, National Guard Pension Fund, and the Firefighters and Rescue Squad Workers Pension Fund. And what these policies do, in short, is that they talk about how the board will commit itself to actuarial funding over a limited, over a medium time period, which is five years, you know? And it also talks about putting into concrete terms how the board views some of the different interests that have to be balanced in funding policy for the plans, such as, you know, first and foremost, the importance of getting enough money into the systems. But there's other interests that have to be balanced with that, like volatility of budgets on local governments or being fair from generation to generation. So the ECRISPs help to articulate how the board balances those different interests. The current ECRISPs and SCRISPs will expire on June 30, 2027, and the boards between now and then will need to decide whether to extend them, change them, even eliminate them. And staff will make recommendations to you on that, working with the other agencies and associations that we work with every day that have a deep and abiding interest in the funding of these retirement systems. We're looking forward to that process. We would highly recommend the board not making any final decision about the future of the ECRISPs after '27 until at least April of 2026. And that is because by that time, the actuaries will have completed their experience study. That will resolve a lot of the unknown issues about the next five years. And so we recommend getting that information, being able to factor that into your decision-making about the next five years, which would be April 2026 at the earliest. That's the update on the first two pages. I want to real briefly tell you what is on pages three and four. Page three is the quarterly update that the boards typically received on the anti-pension spiking law or contribution-based benefit cap. Staff is proposing that this will be the last quarter that this report is regularly provided to the boards in this format, and that is because the CBBC contribution-based benefit cap provisions have now been in place for more than 10 years. During that time, there was often, almost all of that time, there was litigation, and this type of page helped you analyze how much was uncollected, for example, due to litigation. Now that the litigation in this area has been resolved, it's more of a stable situation. It's been around for 10 years. Unless there's an objection from a board member that you might want to talk to us about, then we'll hear you out on it. Our proposal would be not to provide this report in this format every quarter anymore, but the actuaries will still be providing data to the boards on their primary responsibility in this area, which is to set the cap factor, which is part of the operation of this law every five years as part of the experience study.
The information would always be available to anyone who needs it. We're not hiding the ball. We just, we didn't feel the need to continue the regular process.
Page four.
I think we would be hoping to know if there's any uncollected amounts in the CBBC. So if there's people that aren't paying, we'd like to know that.
So Ms. Pender, for example, if it goes uncollected longer than the usual 90 days or so. Okay. Good point.
Another piece of feedback that we have consistently gotten on CBBC, and you may hear it from different folks in your orbits, is that it would be helpful to understand more specifically at an employee level what these numbers are so that people can help to manage those. So one of the changes that we are looking into, and hopefully will be well-received by all the members here, is providing within ranges estimates at the employee line to each unit over time so that they can manage those better, so they're not surprised by these. The other very nuanced piece of feedback we get is, could we do away with the name pension spiking? So we've agreed to try to call this CBBC as much as we can going forward, just to not connote too much malevolence with our conversation. If I may indulge me for a second, I want to go back to where we were with the experience review, the ECRISPs, and then we'll touch on investment policy, because these are all related issues in how we're thinking about both contributions in and investment performance of the various pension plans. So as Patrick well articulated, there are a number of assumptions that go into the experience review that we need to all critically look at this fall and into next spring. That will have implications for how we think about ECRISPs and SCRISPs policies, what to do there. I think we've done a great job lowering the actuarial assumed investment returns to a level, and I won't speak for Kevin, but I'll come a little on the spot, that we feel like those are achievable even long-term. The amortization period is a real question, however. We are towards the very conservative end of the rest of the states in what we do there with a 12-year amortization period, which is probably effectively a little shorter than that based on the ECRISP policies. So think about it as paying off your mortgage. We are essentially paying off our mortgage in 10 or 12 years, depending on your assumption. Some states have gone as far as 40 years. I would not advocate that. But it allows us to think more intergenerationally about how we pay off that debt rather than short-term. I think we have no aspiration of being less conservative fiscally, and we have no aspiration of jeopardizing what's so important in the AAA credit rating of the state. But we want to make sure that we are also being user-friendly to all the units or members of this pension system. All of this dovetails into a conversation that we'll have in the fall into the spring around where we set these things. But I want to underscore all those points are interrelated, and we have conversations around all at the same time. It's really important. Any other questions while we have Patrick here?
I would just like to very briefly mention, page four is a report that we've been asked to provide to the boards every quarter on alternative payments of overpayments. If our staff approves or denies any request for that, there were no either approvals or denials during October through December of 2024.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Move on to the Member Services, Payroll Services, and Operations update.
As you're coming up, can I say nice things about my team while they're coming into the, to the, to the panel? So this absolutely is one of the best teams, operational folks we've ever had in the retirement system, and I think, I promise they go, hear you. This side on the right, this is the Tanya Bass, the one and only, the one who drives the Member Services team to excellence and perfection every day, who has an incessantly positive attitude, and our entire team follows that all the time. And that's how we have our folks keep our cool with our members on the phone. It's Tanya's sterling leadership. And then to Tanya's right is Courtney Carter. This is the first time you guys are seeing Courtney in front of the board. Courtney is our new Director of Payroll Services and Employer Reporting. No pressure, but she only runs the fourth largest payroll, one of the four largest payrolls in the state. I think it's Social Security, then us, then UNC Systems, then Walmart. So if Courtney has a bad day one day, we, you know, we affect 10% of the, 10% of the payroll of the state. So we've never missed payroll. We've come close a couple of times here and there over the years. But Courtney has the right skills and the right team in place to make sure that we're making it every month without a sweat. And then Ron Chisholm, you may have seen Ron in the room before, but not in front of the board. Ron was a Director of Retirement Processing, as such was a leader of the largest team inside the, inside the system, largest single team with inside the staff of the system, the people who calculate their retirement benefits. And over the years, Ron built a unmatched team with his leadership, and I call him the man with no drama, the king of cool. Nothing ever, nothing ever ruffles him, nothing ever phases him, and he always gets it done, even though it looks like it may be an impossible task, and that Ron can pull it off. So I've got, these guys will represent operational updates a little differently. What we've been doing is a longer, more metric-driven slideshow. That is still in your appendix. We're just going to hit the highlights, and if you have questions of any of these, of these guys, the chair wishes to entertain questions. We will, they're available with answers. So.
Sam, a quick, Patrick got away from me. I was reading something, but I had a question in the very first slide. This issue with charter schools, and it seems like every meeting we're dealing with a charter school that's defaulted on various reasons. Can we be provided with the data of that? I mean, how much, how often that is happening? In my time on the board, it seems excessive to be an understatement. It seems like we're dealing with one of those. And I don't know if it's a regulating issue or, I know there's several ways charter schools are developed, several ways they get a pension payment, but it's always a lot of money, and it's, we're liable, but it also affects those teachers who are expecting a pension or benefit.
Yes, Mr. Smith. We would be glad to prepare the data on charter schools that have withdrawn from teasers over the past 10 years or so, what their withdrawal liabilities have been, and the status of whether or not we've been able to collect it.
They only are in teasers, though, correct? There's no local government tie-in there?
That's correct. Teasers allows, it's an option for certain charter schools, nonprofit charter schools, to join teasers. They're not required to be in it. But they can choose to join it, and they can choose to leave. If they do leave, they're required to pay a withdrawal liability.
Good morning. I am Tanya Bass, and I will be presenting an overview of services for the last quarter. I apologize this morning. My allergies are really bothering me, so just bear with me. We decided, Ron, Courtney, and myself decided, because we have some new board members, to give a little background about what our section consists give a little background about what our section consists of, to give a bigger overall picture of our departments. So Member Services is the member facing section of the retirement system. We're composed of counselors, answering members' calls, I mean, answering questions by members by phone, video appointments, front desk, chat, email, and mail correspondence. We host webinars, we empower our 401K vendor to provide a total retirement experience for our members in addition to other internal duties to help ensure that our members receive full service. We are a team of about 73 combined, and we do a multitude of things in regards to member facing. In the last three months, October to December, we've conducted over 135 counselor sessions. And you may notice in your presentation in the appendix, in December, we did not have any appointments due to business needs, so we had to reallocate service, I mean, resources in other areas because of things we had in, coming in for email and correspondence, so we could respond to the members. However, members were still able to contact us and receive services that they would normally receive in an appointment by contacting us over the phone. And if they wanted to do a chat, we was able to assist them immediately, as well as if they wanted to correspond with us through email. We received, we serviced 695 visitors at the front desk, and we conducted over 24 webinars with about 2,000 members in attendance. Member attendance varies depending on the actual event we're hosting, and that just depends on that, how big it is or how small it is. We had about a 14%, decrease from October to December in volume of correspondence from about 8,600 to 7,400. As October spiked, it kind of just rolled in all our areas of business. We did have that spike in October because of Orbit Self-Service, people trying to get into their accounts. We did do this campaign to try to drive more people to Orbit Self-Service, and when we did that, people was timing out a little bit because they didn't remember their credentials, and we had to require additional documentation to reset their accounts to prevent fraud. When we did that, the volume spiked, the call volume spiked, the email spiked, the chat spiked, all of that spiked. It's always like a trending cycle. But we did recover from that. As we began to see Member Services starting to get people verified and back into the system, the volume decreased, the email volume decreased by 13%, the call volume decreased by 33%, and our abandonment rate went from 6.5% to 4.7%. So as you can see, as we continue to assist the members, we was going back down to our normal standards. We have operated almost completely fully staffed in these last three months, having about two to three vacancies. We do have retirees posting, so we're constantly trying to fill those quickly. We're not leaving the vacancies open and not providing services to members. We just recruit as quickly as we can with the most qualified candidates. In conclusion, Member Services continued to partner with operations and to work for quality service and provide contact resolution. And Courtney and Ron and I, again, we work closely together on anything that we have to bring things to a closure for our members. That's just a brief summary for Member Services from the last three months. Did anyone have any questions for me today? Thank you for your time, and I will turn that over to Courtney.
Good morning. I'm Courtney Carter, the Director of Payroll and Employer Reporting. So our payroll group consists of nine analysts and one team lead. They handle monthly and supplemental payroll, overpayments, health insurance changes for our retirees, and any beneficiary designations for active members and retirees. The other part of my group is Employer Reporting, which is two team leads and six analysts. They work with employers on properly reporting and paying contributions, and then working with those agencies to correct any errors. Additionally, they handle inbound questions by phone and email from employers and frequently assist in training employers on how to properly report contributions. In December, we paid 370,000 members during monthly payroll, which is a 2% increase over last year, or about 6,000 additional members. This number includes the 5,900 members currently being paid by check. This is a 13% decrease from last year after we implemented the legislative changes that allowed for members' first benefits checks to be paid by direct deposit. On January 3rd of this year, we processed the files for taxes, which made them available online for all of our members. The file was also submitted to our vendor, and all the forms were mailed out by January 21st and submitted to the IRS and CDR and Social Security. That's it for payroll. If anyone has any questions?
I do have a question. Wilson Weaver City wants to sell, but from time to time we are seeing hard copy checks out.
Yes.
Because of the, a police officer, because of some of the problems that we have had with the United States mail system, whether it's the plain checks or checks being stolen, whether it's out of mailboxes, or whether that's, they may not include some of our postal employees. I'd like to just make a comment that I think we would be in much better shape if we are able to do direct deposit as opposed to mailing checks through, because we had some circumstances where we've got people that are actually washing these checks and then putting those checks in their own personal accounts or wherever they're doing it. Some of those names are coming off those checks, but I'd just like to.
Absolutely. We definitely encourage members to do direct deposit when we try to minimize as much as possible the number of paper checks.
And may I add something to that? We did a campaign in Member Services, I think we talked about this the last board meeting, when we had that devastation from Helene, and people were delayed with getting their checks, and we used that opportunity with compassion to encourage people to do direct deposit because it could have potentially have less impact on them financially if they were still able to get those funds, if the areas in that section were still able to process the money through the bank, but waiting for a check and us just trying to wait to see if they got a check. And then when they got the check, then we dealing with to verify if it was fraud going on with getting a check back to them, trying to verify that, trying to be compassionate if someone could pick up the check, not pick up a check. So I just, and Courtney's, what Courtney's saying, we did take the opportunity and we continue to take the opportunity to encourage people to do direct deposit for those very reasons.
Okay, one more, one more, one more twist on that one. So when Helene hit, the checks for Western, the retirement checks for Western North Carolina were all on one mail truck. And that mail truck was delayed from leaving the station for several days simply because there was nowhere to take the mail to deliver. And so those members did not get the service level that we want, simply because of the, it's a devastation of the hurricane. And so we do recognize this, and we're actively trying to think through ways to get people to adopt online checking or online, direct deposit. Now, it has always been our answer to, taking legislature who's always wanted to say, don't prevent people from doing a paper check if that is what they want, because there are some people who really just won't trust the electronic systems, but we really, it's 2025, and we are trying to push more and more for that, but preserving members' rights to do with it.
Just to be clear, now that we've legislatively removed the need for a physical check for the first payment, there's more barriers to people going electronic.
Correct.
It's a preference.
It is a preference. The only, it's not particularly a barrier, but there is, we do not make it effective until the following month to prevent any fraud issues. So if you mail it this month, it wouldn't take effect till the following month. So that can lead to a paper check if people are not proactive in updating their banking information. They switch bank accounts and they do not send in a new form in a timely manner, then we may have to issue a paper check until we get updated information, either paper form or online. It is still delayed till the following month, so that can lead to some paper checks as well.
I was just going to ask, you kind of got part of my question about the check delivery with Helene we were looking at. But just as far as the team, because I know the last time we spoke, the team was dealing with a lot, with trying to process and deal with those phone calls. I just want to thank you from talking to people across in the western part of the state that were trying to reach this office. Thank you for the efforts that y'all did because it was a lot sitting here in Raleigh, trying to help teammates in this office, service the teammates out there. And as you shared, a lot of them were taking those phone calls where they were having those desperate conversations, and I just want to publicly thank y'all for that work as well.
I just want to confirm one more time, I think we talked about this last time, but for the paper checks, if they are being washed and finally cashed by other people, I don't want to know what they are, but you have the processes in place to catch and identify that fraud, cancel the checks, and reissue and make up for that, correct?
Correct. We have several different processes for that, but yes, we do.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, board members. My name is Ron Chisholm. I am the Director of Benefits Processing. So just an overview of what benefit processing consists of. So it consists of three sections. That includes Retirement Processing, Survivor Benefits Processing, and the Disability and Refunds Processing Team. We're fully staffed. These teams consist of around 60 processing analysts and quality control analysts. The Retirement Processing Group is the largest group of the three. They have around 29 members. The Retirement Processing Team is responsible for processing retirement applications for our teachers, teasers, and elders' retirement members. Each year, we receive and process close to 18,000 paper and online applications. Each year, we pay at least 99% of those members on time if we receive their applications within 60 days of their anticipated retirement date. That statistic of 99% is one that we're very proud of, and we've been consistent in doing that for many years. Our Survivor Benefits Team and Disability Refunds Team are amid their busiest time now. Survivor Benefits receives the highest number of death notifications between January and March, sadly. The volume of refunds will increase in March as a result of processing our IRS required minimum distributions. We anticipate the number of refunds to increase this year for our non vested members, about 800 additional refunds on top of our normal volume due to RMDs. The Disability Team is preparing to mail out over 7,000 statement of incomes in February to determinate members who are still eligible to receive or continue receiving disability benefits. And both sections are actually in the process of rebuilding by filling several vacancies, including some leadership positions. Over the last two months, we've been able to fill in 70% of those positions, and we continue to work to become fully staffed and limit any disruption in the services that we provide our members. And that's about what we have going on in Benefits Processing. You have any questions?
Questions online? Thank you all for your efforts on behalf of our state. Appreciate everything. I'll tell a quick story just to end with. One of the best calls I've gotten so far in the last month was from a certain former governor who had an issue with his retirement payments. They called me not because the problem wasn't resolved, they called me because the problem was resolved so quickly. To quote him, "This is exactly how government should operate," and he would know. And so thank you all for doing it. Thank you. We'll now hear a report from the Investment Advisory Committee.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Lance Brewer. For those of you that have yet to meet, I'm our representative of all the Investment Advisory Committee on behalf of the teasers and elders' boards. So there's five total committee members, and I'm, again, in our particular liaison. So I serve both roles about the state. So the Investment Advisory Committee last met on November 20th, 2024, to discuss the third quarter 2024 performance of the state's Investment Management Division. As most of you know, the state's retirement system makes up the bulk of these assets. As of the end of September 2024, total assets under management for the Investment Management Division stood at $194 billion, with the North Carolina retirement system valued at $128.6 billion, roughly $5.5 billion from the end of the second quarter of 2024. The plan's asset allocation remained largely unchanged from the second quarter, with the growth portion of our portfolio ending at 53.6% of our portfolio against a target of 55%. Rates and liquidity remained overweighted in our portfolio, coming in at 34.82% compared with a target of 33%. Inflation sense of diversifiers remain underweight at 9.95% of our portfolio versus a target of 11, and multi-strategy investments remain overweight with a percentage of roughly 2% against a target of 1%. In regards to the return of the plan for the third quarter, the retirement system returned 4.8% for the third quarter, driven by strong performance in public markets, with the public equity portfolio earning more than 7%, and the core fixed income portfolio earning over 5%. From there, the IAC was presented with a cost effectiveness review of our system conducted by CEM Benchmark. Consultants from CEM annually reviews the cost factors of our retirement system compared to its peers. For 2023, the retirement system's total investment cost was 25.3 basis points compared to a peer median cost of 57.4 basis points. This ranks our retirement system as the lowest-cost plan in the peer universe as measured by CEM. At that point, staff conducted asset class reviews of two of our particular asset classes. The investment fixed grade income and the opportunistic fixed income were reviewed in detail by their respective directors. Each of these directors reviewed the portfolios covering current structure, performance, and fixed income market dynamics. To wrap up the meeting, IAC took a minute to thank outgoing Treasurer Folwell for his service, as well as IAC members Greg Patterson, Laura Coquill, Michael Mavon, and John Anarola. That wrapped up our business for the meeting from the third quarter, shooting, from the review in the third quarter. May I answer any questions the audience or fellow board members might have in regards to that?
Okay. Hearing none, let me turn it over to Kevin Sigrist, our Chief Investment Officer. Many of you may know Kevin from his prior service for the state. He was Chief Investment Officer for the plans until 2017, but he rejoins us in that same capacity. We are going to evolve the asset allocation of these plans and begin that conversation at the Investment Advisory Committee with Brewer and four new members, and we'll introduce them with their bios here in a couple of slides in late February, and enjoy any participation in that as we consider doing that over time. But with that, let me turn it over to Kevin for an update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's good to be back and look forward to interacting with the boards in the future as well. So I'm going to cover just the year-end performance and then talk a little bit about what we're focused on as we go forward in 2025 into 2026. So slides are up there. Yeah, there we go. So the, the return for 2024, as you heard from Patrick, was a favorable return in the sense that we earned more than the actuarial assumed rate of return, as well as the long-term average. So the long-term average for the last 20 years is shown on the chart, it's about 6%. That's also the rate of return, the average rate of return that we've earned for the retirement systems over the last 10 years as well. It's about 5.9%. So somewhat better performance. Unfortunately, over the last three years, the return has only averaged about 2%, which is far below what we would like to see for the long term. I think one thing to keep in mind is always is we're investing for 10, 20, 30 years because the obligations, the promises that have been made get paid out over the lifetime of individuals that are enrolled in the plans. And one year, two years of favorable performance is not really the goal. It's to earn sustainably over long periods of time, something in excess of the actual rate of return, right, to 6.5%. So last year was a good year in the sense that you So last year was a good year in the sense that US economy was very favorable. We had inflation continuing to drop, so we're getting down closer to the target of the Federal Reserve, which is about 2%, so still a bit above that. Had good labor markets. Stock market reflected this with really strong returns. So in the US, the stock market was up about 25%, not exactly leading the world, but clearly one of the highest performing stock markets in the world, right? When you look overseas in aggregate, foreign stock markets only rose about 6%, a little less than 6%. So our allocation to the usual stock market was was very favorable for the plan. Unfortunately, with interest rates, interest rates rose for long-term bonds. And when interest rates rise, that means the prices of bonds decline. And so our fixed income portfolio only had about a half a percent return for the whole year. So if you go to the next slide, you can see how this translates into what really matters for the pension plan, which is the the total earnings in dollars, right? So on the right-hand side, you can see the contributions that came from the various asset classes and the total earnings for the plan, which was about $9 billion, right? Which is a sizable amount, and that reflects 7% of the the planned assets. The the biggest contributor came from public equities or the stocks that we invest in. And that's a function of two things. It's a function of the size of that allocation, which was for the year about 40%, and then also the the strong returns that we saw. On the other hand, 35% of the portfolio is invested in. Here it's labeled investment grade IG fixed income. Those are high-quality corporate bonds and US Treasury bonds and and then cash. And so the fixed income only earned about half a percent for the year, and cash earned about 5% for the year. But given that those returns are relatively low and it constitutes 35% of the portfolio, it means it didn't contribute much to the results for the year. I think as as we look forward, as the Treasurer mentioned, this is a key area that we'll be working with the Investment Advisory Committee on, which is what is the best allocation to things like bonds and cash relative to stocks and relative to other investment types? So I'm going to go on to the the last slide.
Can you just talk a little bit about what is core and non-core real estate? Those are the two that have negative.
So the difference between core and non-core is if you think of an office building, an office building that is fully leased up, so it's it's got all the space basically occupied, and we would consider that core, stabilized. Non-core could have been an older building, partially unfilled, and a property manager is working to kind of fill the space. Maybe they're freshening the building by improving the lobby, improving some of the tenant, what like break rooms, gyms in the private sector and things like that. So it's a it's still a very attractive investment, but it will take a period of time to be fully stabilized, fully leased. And that's the difference between the two.
Things can move from core to non-core because buildings will age over time.
Exactly.
How do you categorize what would move more to the other?
Probably the the simplest example would be we've had investments in the past that built from the ground up apartment buildings. So when that's in a development phase, the construction and then the leasing and filling, that's non-core. And but eventually, with success with this over the years, those apartments get filled, and it just becomes a regular operating business. Markets can go up and down in, you know, real estate. So the rents from year to year might grow faster or might grow slower. So the value of that property can move around a bit from year to year. Likewise, it's a core property.
Something I might add, just as I think about it over a very high level, core real estate acts like bonds. So we're exposed to interest rates as a factor that we want to worry about in that category. So how our bond portfolio acts is likely how our core real estate portfolio is going to act. Non-core real estate portfolio is deeply idiosyncratic, and it is really skill-based around the managers we hire. Big difference to that point out.
Yep. The I think if you go to the to the last slide, pardon me. This is forward-looking, what our priorities are. And so we've got some rebalancing work to do, and we'll do that in three phases. The first phase, pardon me, first phase is we have excess cash at this point relative to what the long-term allocation is expected to be and is supposed to be to cash. And so some of that is going to be deployed over the next three to four months. We have the the advantage that over the last three years, long-term interest rates have risen. And so the the types of interest rates, yields we can earn on, you know, very safe, comfortable bonds are quite attractive. And so we have the ability to invest readily out of cash into bonds and and other types of investments. Likewise, there are still plenty of places that we can invest the money in, cash, the stock market, and some of the other investments like commercial mortgages where the yields are very attractive as well. We'll be consulting with the Investment Advisory Committee in February, as the chair mentioned, and we'll take their input as well around potential uses of some of the excess cash. And and then finally, we'll be working towards an asset liability study, which is again a long-term study that has to reflect the experience study that will be forthcoming later this year. The boards here will take that up in October. And there will be some adjustments that come out with the asset liability study to to get the right balance between earning a good return over time that'll beat the actual rate of return as well as not taking too much risk. So expectation, really expectation is that the the overall strategic asset allocation, the investment plan, investment policy will still stay quite conservative relative to a lot of other investors that we see in public pensions, endowments, private pensions and things like that. But there are ways that we believe, particularly given where interest rates are at and where the markets are at, that we can improve the return over the long period of time, right? And so that'll be part of what we do reflecting the experience study. We'll talk to the Investment Advisory Committee. Our target is in November to bring some recommendations for potential changes to the strategic asset allocation. And then we'll be obviously here a year from now as well when you take up the approval of the actual assumptions because these things have to move hand in glove. And so that's an important milestone for us as well. On the investment governance, so we have reconstituted the Investment Advisory Committee. Thankfully, Lance is staying on. And if you go to the next slide, actually.
Can I ask the asset liability state? What was the last one we did?
It was completed in 2022. So started in '21 and then completed in 2022.
So our goal is like the experience studies every five years. How often do we want to do one of these?
You know, the world has evolved over time. And so it used to be every three to five years, asset liability study was done. The world's evolved more towards every two to three years. And if there's a major event, and major events would be a change in benefit structure, change in the markets, then those are usually accelerated. And so I've worked somewhere where we actually did two in one year. So not suggesting we do that here.
The legislature requires to do it at least once in five years, and we can do it more frequently. And we we're big fans of the process, and it's it's good information that comes comes forward every time we do one of these. And Kevin is one of the, I would consider one of the leading experts in the country on how to apply these in a practical matter for retirement systems. So we're blessed to have that additional talent.
In addition to the statutory requirement, I think the big investment-related item that is driving our desire to do this is the change in interest rate regime. For the longest time, we had zero short-term rates and 1% long-term rates, and the ability to make 6.5% or 7.25% in that paradigm is very different than today where the long-term treasury is 4.5%. And so that's going to help us think through how we're setting the asset allocation going forward.
You said Pat Hurley, but are we investing still in hedge funds or foreign country funds or whatever they do over there, like banks, California and other places?
The the portfolio is very, very diversified. And so most countries of the world are represented in the in the portfolio. So that that's the case both for our stock investments as well as some of our bond investments. On the bond side, a small part of the portfolio would be invested overseas at this point. In terms of hedge funds, we do have some hedge fund investments. We've had them in the portfolio for a long period of time, so we've had good performance. As with any investment manager or any kind of relationship we would have, we stay very much connected with what's going on at the firm and the performance and what's driving the performance. So at this point, we're we're quite comfortable with most of the the hedge funds we have in the portfolio, and we're comfortable with the kind of the risk dimensions of of those investments. But we do, you know, understand completely that, you know, the degree of monitoring we have to do to stay on top of the risk profile is is higher. And so we have expert resources internally, our our team, as well as external consultant resources that help on that also. But we do have hedge funding exposure, yeah.
Two things I might add. We have a strong US bias in the portfolio, and that's something that has both served us well, and we anticipate continuing. Clearly, this country has been much more friendly to investors than many others. We actually this morning had a meeting with a foreign governor who was trying to convince us to invest in their country and couldn't really understand why they were here, to be honest. So that's the first piece. The second piece on hedge funds particularly, this goes back to the interest rate change. In a world of 1% long-term interest rates, hedge funds that can deliver 6% or 7% annual returns are really interesting. In a world of 4.5% or 5% interest rates, hedge funds that can deliver 6% interest, 6% net returns are much less interesting. So as part of the asset liability study, the asset allocation conversation, we have to think through how the world has changed and what the implications are for every line item in our portfolio.
Have we been seeing positive returns from the hedge funds?
Yes, we have, yeah. And I think the, you know, the challenge we face as well is markets go up and down, right? Every day, throughout the day. And over over some periods of time, we can, you know, manage that directly. But there's a lot of the actual investment management that occurs through these relationships. It's not through the internal team. We pick the managers and we oversee the managers and so on. But there is that kind of delegation to the external managers. And in trying to manage that market risk, it's those external managers that frankly have the most resources and the most skill. But again, we we bring a a high degree of, I guess, skepticism around the ability of managers to time the markets and move in and out. So we take a really sharp eye towards that, yeah. Treasurer, did you want to? Please.
Yes, I have a quick question. Can we ask a quick another question?
Please, who's speaking?
This is Jeff Morse.
Please go ahead.
I might have missed it, but the question that the question I have is, are there any reports comparing the our retirement system's portfolio with similar clients or similar institutions, state retirement systems? Do we have any thinking that compares how our investment portfolio compares with other states that have employee retirement systems?
Go ahead.
We do not formally prepare that report, but we can certainly think about doing that going forward. The Boston College Center for Retirement publishes a robust set of data that will allow you to compare all 130 major plans in the United States. And we can attempt to summarize that if you would like. What you will see as you look at that is that we are among the most conservative plans in the country, and as a result, have some of the lowest returns in the country over every material period. That is largely a choice that we have to think through whether we want to keep making. This has been a wonderfully fiscally conservative state in a lot of ways, and that has benefits for us. Point conservatism towards lack of wealth. And so we will have that conversation over a long period of time. And as Kevin alluded to, as we think about asset allocation in the future, we need to be in other states at some point, but we can learn from other states. And we aspire to do that, and we're happy to communicate whatever this board would like to see from us.
If there's if there's opportunities to have that information to the board, I think it'd be extremely valuable if we evaluate our performance criteria.
Have to prepare something for our next meeting.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Kevin before I give a quick introduction to the new Investment Advisory Committee members?
When is their next, when is our next meeting?
I believe it's February the 26th.
The Investment Advisory Committee.
Yes, yes, exactly.
So we have four new members of the Investment Advisory Committee. We've included their biographies here. Thank you to Lance for being willing to serve further in this capacity. Appreciate all of the things you do for our state. Robert Durden joins us. Robert is the Chief Investment Officer for the University of Virginia. He is a North Carolina native, has worked in the state for many years. Now, of course, works across Florida and Virginia, but he is joining us in this capacity. Michael Kennedy, another North Carolina native, joins us from Atlanta, Georgia. Michael is deeply involved in the Georgia pension systems, so we aspire to learn from him there. He sits on the Board of the University of North Carolina's Investment Management Function. He was also Chair of the 2014 Governance Study that this state commissioned. So he has deep expertise in governance matters around the pension system as well. Jamie Spencer, another North Carolina native, works in a Chief Investment Officer capacity with a pathstone which advises large families on their portfolios. And Dan Ward, the former Chief Investment Officer for Virginia Tech, now Chief Investment Officer for the Greenhawk Family Office, which is a local, large family office. So deep investment expertise, which we're happy to have join us in this capacity. And to anyone who wants to join those meetings, they're of course open to the public, and we welcome participation. Okay. Any further questions for Kevin O'Leary?
Hearing none.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll now move over to the public comment section. We have no public comments. Okay, all right.
Good morning. I'm Tim O'Connell. I'm with, we now call ourselves RGEA. We dropped a few letters because it's got a little confusing there, but I just want to say it's a pleasure to be here. And Dr. Brenner, we are thrilled to be working with you, and we believe you put together an amazing team. And we have faith in you and Sam, the way you began, and I would like to add that, if you're passionate. And also, the the topic, the most important is, you know, can a can a retirement system deliver dignity in retirement to the retirees? And that's, you know, a big umbrella to this. And I do think the important thing is for us to look at, and this is why I'm very thrilled to have in this team, is the the asset and the performance. There's, you know, that is going to be unearthed. It's really important because we are seeing we are not a top performer. are seeing we are not a top performer. And the impact of that is on the lives of the retirees. So I'm looking forward to the process, and I appreciate the process, and the process is important here. We can kind of double down on that area if we, and thank you for the work.
Thank you. Anyone else signed up? Okay. With that, we will close the public comment sections and move over to the state system presentation for our actuary Gallagher.
Morning, Treasurer. Board members, thanks for having us here today. Mike Ribble with Gallagher. This is Beth Wiley. We're going to start with the state system teasers, update of the projections. Then Patrick will come up and talk about the alternatives this year for all the state system, and then we'll be back to talk about the local system projections in a similar manner. If you go to Slide 3, this is a, this is the main reason we come here to update the projections in January is because we want to be sure you're well-informed ahead of any decisions that are made around benefit improvements like potential COLAs or supplements. This graph here projects the 15-year projection of contribution rates. Our projected contribution is, that's updated, is a lower green line. It's just slightly lower. This is because the asset return that was estimated by the Investment Management Board for 2024 was, as mentioned, was 7.4% versus our target of 6.5%. So 0.9% higher drops the projected contribution rates just a little bit over the course of the projection. So we brought in that 7.4% thereafter. This projection is assuming 6.5% return for the remainder of the projection. So this year, that 7.4% update turned out to be quite close, so the lines are close together. You can see the next few years that, see, the short top-left segment rate is the board's stable contribution rate policy. That one is 17.14% for fiscal year ending 2026 and 17.49% for fiscal year ending 2027, and that's what, at what point the policy expires. And but you can see, if you imagine the line extending off a few more years, if it was extended, it would end up around 18.2%, which is just slightly above where our new projected peak is for 18.05%. We have a peak because of the 2022 investment return of negative 10.4% caused, missed by about 17%. So, cause with the five-year assets moving, we're bringing in those losses five years at a time, so it would peak. But even though it was this year, the update is small here, it's just that we have one more piece of information. Next year, we'll have a lot more information. We'll start with evaluation update, which will include updates to the 2024, what happened during 2024. For example, if compensation increases continue like they were in 2022 and 2023, that might spike up the contribution rate. Of course, we'll know in October, and then back here again next January, we'll know, have an update of the 25 return, asset return. And then finally, we have the experience study that we've been talking about, and that, more than just a little movement, that can cause a bigger jolt one way or another. It just depends on how the study comes up, where the board ends up approving assumptions. So by the time we get to January of next year, we'll have all that additional information, we'll be that much closer, the board can begin knowing kind of where that peak ended up and what they want to do with the policy. So moving forward to the next slide, this is a 15-year projection of the funded ratio for teasers, and this on an actuarial value of asset basis. You can see this year, this one, the updated line is just a little bit slightly higher because we have 0.9% more return than expected, so it notched up the funded ratio projection a little bit over the course of the projection. Why the contribution rate is kind of flat and drooping down a little bit for the next four years, that's just the bringing in of the four-year instead of spiking it, just kind of holds the funded ratio flat. And then we begin the slow movement upward over a 12-year period to get to 100%. That reflects the 12-year amortization period. So once we bring in all those losses, if everything goes according to plan, then we get to 100% after 12 years. That's fair for teasers. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks. Good morning again. For those on the virtual meeting, this is Patrick Kinlaw. The purpose of this agenda item, which is, I think, Agenda Number 18, is for the State Board to make recommendations to the legislature for funding and benefits of the systems overseen by the State Board. And those recommendations would be in light of the actuarial reports from Gallagher, that Gallagher delivered in October, and the information we've discussed today. So we'll focus first on the executive summary, which is on the first page. Although behind Page 1, you'll see detailed information for each of the retirement systems under consideration. The gist of this discussion is that in October, Gallagher published their actuarial valuations as of December 31, 2023, and those provided the actuarially determined employer contribution rates for the fiscal year ending 2026, so the first year of the upcoming legislative biennium. And Gallagher's calculations assumed that no further benefit improvements or one-time supplements would be enacted. That was just the assumption underlying their reports. And Gallagher has stated in those reports that there were no actuarial investment gains to support the cost of a benefit improvement or a one-time supplement. So the logical recommendations for the state retirement system, judicial, legislative, and the Disability Income Plan in North Carolina would be for the board to recommend that the legislature establish contribution rates at least equal to the rates provided by Gallagher's actuarial valuations delivered to you in October. And the, for the, in the case of the state system, that includes the adjustment under the board's ECRIS per employer contribution rate stabilization policy. So that would leave just one substantive question for the, for the State Board to consider. That question has to do with the North Carolina National Guard Pension Fund. And a reminder of why we're talking about that one specifically is that it's in a different funded position from all the others. The most recent actuarial report showed that there was a surplus of $37 million. That means that fund was more than 124% funded in terms of the benefits that have already been promised. And that surplus was generated in part by the General Assembly funding the plan for several years at levels greater than what the actuaries said was the minimum requirement. So the question at hand is whether the board would recommend that the legislature enact a benefit improvement for the North Carolina National Guard Pension Fund. That type of recommendation is summarized on Page 8 of this material. Right now, members of that fund receive $105 per month if they had 20 years of military service, and then it steps up to double that, $210 a month, if they had 30 years of military service. Under the board's funding policy, or SCRIS, the board could recommend that those numbers be adjusted. If you look at Table 1 on Page 8, could be adjusted as high as $108 after 20 years of military service, and then 216, again, double that amount, after 30 years of military service. This type of adjustment would still leave the plan with a substantial funding surplus under the actuarial measurement. The amount that the board would recommend the legislature contribute to the plan in the upcoming fiscal year is on Table 2, so a little bit lower on the screen. If there's no adjustment to the benefit rate, which is kind of the top row, the board would recommend the legislature contribute $1,110,318, going all the way up to, if the board is recommending a benefit improvement, to 108, the maximum benefit improvement under the funding policy, then the board would recommend about $6,000 more of funding from the General Assembly in the upcoming fiscal year. So to conclude, if we look at Page 10, this page has been drafted as the potential recommendations from the board, assuming that the board would want to recommend contributions at least equal to the actuarial requirements for teasers, the judicial system, the legislative system, and the Disability Income Plan. And then also that the board would recommend a benefit improvement up to $108 for 20 years of military service, and 216 after 30 years of military service in the National Guard Pension Fund. If the board wants to make all those recommendations, then the motion could be just to adopt the recommendations on Page 10. If the board wants to make any different recommendation, then the motion would just need to specify the detail of that recommendation, and then staff would make the conforming changes to this page before communicating it to the General Assembly.
On the, thank you. On the teachers, that 0.35, is that what's passed on to individual school systems in our state, that they would have to do that increase?
Correct. So the, so this is for the teachers and state employees retirement system. The actuarially determined contribution, including the board's funding policy, which is ECRIS, provides that up through fiscal year ending '27, that contribution, that employer contribution rate will increase at least 35 hundredths of a percent of pay every year. And that's the rate that employers have to pay on top of the 6% that employees pay. And employers in that system do include public school systems. They also include state agencies, universities, community colleges, and some charter schools.
I was asking because that flows down into the local governments. I was asking, that increase would come to school systems and community college for local governments to increase their contributions to schools, local expense, to cover that cost?
I can add just a, just a point of how, this is a, this is a very, a great question. This, I think this is actually the reason why Superintendent Green sits on both boards, is the General Assembly sets the contribution rate for the state system in the State Budget Act every year. And for employees for which the General Assembly provides funding, they typically will provide, they always provide the additional funding required for the contribution rate for the retirement system. So they will increase, increase what's appropriated to the school system to that amount. I'm saying that in the most simple terms. I'm sure the folks in the back here could, we need clarification. That's how it works. And since the General Assembly sets the contribution rate for all the employers, even those employers that have employees that are not funded but legislative funding in the state system, they have to pay for it out of their own receipts or whatever funding sources. So if the school system has employees that are federally funded, or federally funded only, or locally funded, the local government or the federal government pays that additional contribution rate. And that is a, you know, a critical part of why we want to be transparent about this and acknowledge that it affects every public agency across the state. And this board takes a look at these items, and when you vote on, it's critical for everyone.
Question. I may be off a little bit. I thought we had an employer contribution rate at 24.5. Is that?
Thanks, Mr. Hawley. That is, the number your income, talking about, would include the contribution employers make toward retiree healthcare benefits. So there's, there's the retirement rate, which is the part that goes up 35 hundreds. But there's also retiree healthcare, disability, and death benefits on top of that.
Questions, either in person or by phone?
Chris is crystal certain I have a question.
Go ahead.
I just want to make sure I understand, Patrick, on the, what the true recommendation is. So it's to establish the contribution rate at 17.14. It says state, I'm thinking about it in, in local government and law enforcement. So is this, so make sure I understand exactly as being proposed. I'm sorry to make that claim one more time, but, can you help me, please?
Yes, and I have a similar question, so to go over this again would be very helpful.
Let me just put it in context within the agenda. This is Sam Watts, Retirement Director. The, we typically vote for the state system, we had to vote for the state system separate from the local system. The conversation about the contribution rates for the local government employee system is coming up next, after we dispense with the state system, system rates. Now, as Andrew Pender has acknowledged, this is, it affects everyone. And so certainly the, the local rates for general employees and for law enforcement officers are the subject for the, for the next, next section of the agenda.
Thank you. Okay, I'll hold. Thank you.
Patrick, looking at the Disability Income Plan, I see that you're suggesting that that rate decrease. And why is that?
Thank you for that question, Ms. Reader. So the, this is because of the actuarial calculations changing every year. But the previous year, the recommended actuarially determined rate was 13 one-hundredths of a percent of pay. With the new calculations Gallagher performed and presented in October, that decreased to 7 one-hundredths of a percent of pay. The, there were several reasons for that, but going from, that all sort of added up to the same direction, which was bringing the rate down. But going from memory, the primary one was that long-term disability benefits are offset by people's social security benefit that they receive for disability. And the social security disability benefit increased with inflation quite a lot over the past few years, and that led to the net benefit that our plan had to pay coming down because it subtracts off people's social security benefit. There were other reasons, but that's the one that sticks out. I don't know if, I probably shouldn't characterize Gallagher's work without them having an opportunity to chime in.
That's my real, that's the main reason. Yes, we got updates to some social security offsets as well, but.
We will bring the social security offset to you in a later meeting this year, discussion at the appropriate, when you have a decision point on that, 12 months.
Any other questions on the state systems? With that, do I have a motion from a member of the State Board to approve the recommendations to the General Assembly for the teachers and state employees retirement system, legislative retirement system, consolidated judicial retirement system, the Disability Income Plan in North Carolina, and the North Carolina National Guard Pension Fund, which are described on Page 10 of the state alternatives document, including a requested amendment to the provisions of the NC National Guard Pension Fund to increase the monthly benefit from $105 to $108 per month after 20 years of military service, from $10.50 to $10.80 for each of the next 10 years of military service, and from $210 to $216 after at least 30 years of military service, as seen on Page 10.
So move, as Page 10.
Second, Mr. Winston. I'll roll.
I have John Ebbe Housing as the motion, and Jeffrey Winston as the second. And so under Board procedure, in these cases, your candidates, yes votes. So Treasurer Breiner?
Aye.
Josh Smith?
Aye.
Liz Brewer?
Aye.
Margaret Reader?
Aye.
Superintendent Green? Mr. Hawley?
Aye.
Pat Hurley?
Aye.
Stacy Meyer?
If I can vote without having been sworn in, yes. Aye.
We did the, we did the paperwork swearing in, which makes you eligible to We did the, we did the paperwork swearing in, which makes you eligible to vote. Next time you win your person, we'll do the, we'll do the, we'll do the following. So you can vote.
Just confirming, thank you.
And Mr. Gammon is not, not here. Motion carries.
Thank you. So let's move to the local system conversation. We'll welcome the folks in Gallagher back.
Beth Wiley. Thanks for having us out here again today. So I will be speaking about the local government employee retirement system. If we could go ahead and hop over to slide three. The story here is going to be very similar to that of the teasers plan in that, you know, asset performance played a key role in what you're going to see today. So the blue line represents what we showed you back in October based on the 2023 valuation results. And the green line is an update to that blue line reflecting the 7.4% of tentative return that we have for 2024 in our projection. So you can see that the 2026, basically our ending 2026 contribution is still at 13.92% set with the 2023 valuation. The 2027 fiscal year contribution rate for non-law enforcement officers has slightly dipped down from 15.05% down to 14.97% as a result of that favorable return. We are still projecting a peak out in 2029, again to that, due to that poor asset performance in 2022 where there was a negative 10%, 10.4% return. But rather than capping out at 17.01%, it has dipped down to 16.74%. I should mention what I just said was slightly incorrect. The rates that we're showing are actuarially determined employer contribution rates. Your ECRIS policy has your rates fixed for 2026 at 14.35% of pay for 2026 and 15.1% of pay for 2027. My apologies. For the teasers plan, we graphed on there and I had it highlighted over on the right side on this graph. So that ECRIS policy does expire in 2027. So from 2028 onward, we are assuming the actuarially determined employer contribution rate shown on this graph is contributed to the plan. There's a lot that's going to be changing in this picture. We are assuming six and a half percent returns. We don't know what future asset returns will be. We have the forthcoming experience study coming up, which is going to potentially change how our liabilities move over time. We're going to have demographic changes over the forthcoming year impacting our 2024 evaluation. So even next year's contribution rate is subject to change because we don't know exactly what's going to happen demographically for this plan. So we'll know a lot more once we get to the next valuation. Simultaneously with that valuation, we are preparing your experience study. So we're going to know a lot more here in October. Excuse me. If we go to the next slide, this shows the projected contribution rates for law enforcement officers. So for this group, the contribution rate is set at 16.1% for fiscal year '26 and climbs up to 17.1% for fiscal year '27 for your, under your ECRIS policy. A notable difference between the elders' plan and the teasers' plan is that the teasers' ECRIS policy effectively guarantees that you meet at least the actuarially determined employer contribution. On the elders' side, that is not part of the design of the policy. The objective, or rather, the goal of that policy was to set the rates such that in aggregate over the five-year period of that policy, you meet the total dollar amounts that would have gone into the plan under the actuarially determined employer contribution rates. So under your ECRIS for fiscal year '27, it's set at 17.1% of payroll. But you'll notice for fiscal year '27, our actuarially determined employer contribution is projected to be 17.28% of payroll. So it's slightly below that. However, in total, over the five-year period under your ECRIS policy, you've met at least the total dollar amount that would have, would be actuarially recommended for that period. So while it does fall below, it doesn't necessarily cause any kind of concern and still did put the plan in a good position to mitigate some of this volatility and climb on the actuarially determined employer contribution rates. There is still a peak out in fiscal year '29, again, due to the poor asset performance in 2022. So rather than climbing to 19.3%, it is projected to cap out at 19.06% of payroll and then continues to decline thereafter. And the exact same comments apply as the prior slide regarding asset returns, experience study, demographic, all of that. All right, if we go to the next slide. This shows the projected funded ratio for elders. The plan is 86.9% funded as the most recent valuation. We're expecting that to actually remain the same now, given the 7.4% return. It dips down to 86.2% funded in 2026 and then climbs to 100% funded in 2037, 1231, 37, excuse me, valuation date. Any questions on that?
Any other questions?
Thanks again. This is Patrick Tenlaw. I just want to acknowledge the great work that Gallagher does on this every year and mention that there's a tight timeframe that we have to wait till we have a good idea of what the investment returns were from 2024. Won't have a good idea of that until maybe several days into January and then they have to work hard quickly so that we can distribute these to the boards in time. And I just want to acknowledge their, their great work putting this together every year, including this year. We're now on Agenda Item 20. And this is the discussion about the alternatives for the local board and their decisions and recommendations to the General Assembly. We'll approach this similarly to how we talked about the item for the state board a moment ago. But one important difference to remember is that whereas the state board only makes recommendations to the General Assembly on the setting of employer contribution rates, the local board is authorized to decide the employer contribution rate for local governments for the upcoming fiscal year. So that's one substantive item for the board to consider. And as far as setting the upcoming year, fiscal year's contribution rate, the staff recommendation here gets back to what we talked about earlier in the meeting, sticking to the knitting. So this is, there's an ECRIS. It's in place through June 30th, 2027. Gallagher teams showed you what those rates are for the upcoming fiscal year. The employer contribution rate under the ECRIS would be 14.35% for non-law enforcement employees and 16.10% for law enforcement employees. When you compare that to the current fiscal year contribution rates, that represents a total of about $72 million more that local governments would be called upon to contribute in the upcoming fiscal year into elders than they did in this current fiscal year.
Patrick?
Yes.
Question. Just for comparison purposes, so people understand the context of what 17 million looks like for local governments. It's a penny for property tax.
And just to make sure I didn't say a number wrong, 72 million was the number. We believe, just looking at aggregate information from other state agencies, that the equivalent of a penny property tax rate adds up to probably about $150 million for all the local government entities that participate in the local government retirement system. Not all of them do. But if you were to add it up for all the ones that participate, then the equivalent of a penny is about $150 million.
So we're going about half. This is about a half, this is worth about a half, half penny of property tax rate decision that we're imposing.
Correct. And part of the design, part of the goal of the ECRIS and talking with stakeholder groups, employer groups, all the groups that had input, was to try to keep that and to acknowledge that there needed to be an increase, but try to keep it stable. That's so in no single year did you have increases that were likely to get, let's say, above that $150 million mark. Okay. This side, I do want to mention the second question for the local board to discuss and consider is whether to recommend an increase in the benefit for the firefighters and rescue squad workers pension fund. This is another fund that is more than 100% funded because of this board's efforts, our actuaries' efforts, and probably most importantly, the General Assembly delivering the funding more than what was minimally required in recent years. Last year, you may recall that this board recommended that the benefit for that fund be increased from $170 to $175 a month. And that the rate that firefighters and rescue squad workers have to pay in be increased from $10 to $15 a month over the 20 years that they pay in. And those recommendations of the board were enacted in 2024 by the legislature, so they're now in effect. The question this year is there's another situation where the board could request an increase in the benefit, this time from $175 to $180 a month. But there does not need to be a request to increase the member contribution rate this time. It would remain at $15 a month. If the board recommends an increase up to $180, the fund would still be in an actuarial surplus position. The board would not have to request additional appropriations from the legislature beyond the $350,000 annual step up that is already under the board's funding policy or SCRIS. So, so that's the second decision. First decision is on setting the employer contribution rate for the local system for the upcoming fiscal year. Second decision is on a recommendation to the legislature to enact a benefit increase for the firefighters and rescue squad workers pension fund as, as much as $5 a month up to 180.
Interject one more piece here because this one is, this one is near and dear to my heart when we talk about the idea of sticking to our knitting. In 2013, we had to do a full rewrite on the underlying statute for this fund because we were, it was in, it was in a very precarious financial position. And so we rewrote, we worked carefully with stakeholders, with the firefighters, our association with, and with the General Assembly members, including then Representative Pat Hurley, to make sure that we, we put a process in that would lead us to a point where this fund is fiscally healthy. And so it's, it is a great point of pride for the retirement staff. We're at that point where we can say, look, if you stick to the knitting, you can make things healthy again, even if they're, even if they're in a bad spot. Just wanted to interject that to the delegation.
Before concluding, I just want to bring us to page eight. This is the summary of, the potential summary of the board's decisions and recommendations. This assumes that the board would, on the local system, establish employer contribution rates based on the ECRIS that exists right now. And on the firefighters and rescue squad workers pension fund, that the board would recommend the General Assembly increase the benefit to $180 a month and stick to its SCRIS in terms of the funding recommendation to the General Assembly, which would be $350,000 greater than the current fiscal year, increasing the appropriation from about 20.4 million to 20.75 million. And if the board wants to do all of those things, then the motion could be just to adopt the recommendations on page eight. If there's anything different, you would just need to specify it in the motion and we could make conforming changes before communicating it to the legislature. Questions?
Thank you. So I agree with sticking to your knitting. Don't disagree, we need to keep the system valid. However, in a year where we had the worst disaster in western North Carolina and now it's been an increase of 1.75 more percent, we would, we're not in a position to raise taxes this year to cover that. So I would have to respectfully ask that we not look for a 1.75% increase to our local government's retirement.
Thanks, Chris Pender. If I could, just to clarify one thing. The local governments pay one rate for their non-law enforcement employees and a super rate for law enforcement. The recommendation here is to increase the non-law enforcement rate by 0.75, the law enforcement by 0.1, but sorry, by 1%, which is what the ECRIS is. But neither one would actually increase by both.
Agreed. But the total for the local government is that 1.75. On average, it's 0.75 and 1%. What I'm asking for is an opportunity to look at that differently for this year because 39 counties in our state has experienced the worst natural disaster in our state history. And it is not feasible with the disaster and the destruction in our community to raise taxes on those residents that have no home right now.
And I might, this is Nancy Vaughn. I'd like to add, you know, we currently spend, I think it's $29.3 million a year for our retirees. I would like to see what the full impact on this increase would be. Do I understand that the teasers' increase is paid by the legislature, but that the local government would have to pay these increases?
I think Sam mentioned that, yes, if it's a federally funded position or state-funded position, but most school systems in our state have locally funded positions as well. So those locally funded positions, that increase would be paid by the local government as well as this increase. I can only speak for my county, but in Buncombe County, we have almost 1,000 locally funded positions that we pay in our school system that, that would flow through to our local government's budget.
Sure. And, and the, the teachers are, are paid out of the county budget, which we still pay the taxes, so it matters. But, you know, I'm focused on the general city employees at this point. Could you give me an average? Could you give me an average on what the increase is to the person, to a person?
It's just the employee.
Mayor Vaughn, if I'm understanding the question correctly, this item is not to recommend any increase to benefits for retirees at the present time. It's to set the contribution rate that employing entities in the local government system have to pay in in the upcoming fiscal year?
Correct. So it is, I'm kind of just trying to figure out what it does to our budget because we're all under a lot of stress right now. Thank you.
So if I may attempt to address some of the concerns, which obviously parts of the state have been through horrific circumstances and are going to be recovering for many, many years. Not raising the contribution into elders is just another form of borrowing. And so I think the question becomes where the municipalities and the counties want to borrow from. You can either borrow from the pension system, which you will have to pay back ultimately, or from the cash flow lending program that we're setting up right now, which is 0% cost. Borrow from potentially disaster relief bonds that we may need to issue as a state that will be backed by FEMA payments. So financially, these are all the same thing. To me, the question is, what is the most effective place for municipalities to get the funds they need? What is the lowest cost way to do that? The cash flow lending program that we're setting up is zero cost. The pension system has a 6.5% cost. So I don't want to lose sight of the fact that all of this is the same question, and that is where can we borrow from to get the relief to the community? I would advocate for finding the cheapest cost, which is not the pension contribution. So that's how I would think about it. I'm not asking you guys to think about it that way, but I do think that money is fungible in the end. If we don't pay it here, we're going to have to pay it here eventually. So that's how I would think about the decision to raise the elders' contribution rate is just a different form of borrowing, reasonably high cost.
Thank you.
Of course.
I'm not a part of the local board, but I just have a question. If they cannot afford, the employer cannot afford the increase, then what happens?
See. You, the authority of the local board is absolutely, it sets the contribution rate that the employers must pay. And so as the treasurer stated very eloquently, I believe, it's a question of where do you get the money from and what's the cost of getting the money to pay them? So it is a loan program that's recently been, very recently, December in fact, enacted by the general assembly, placed under control of the Department of State Treasurer. We're now in the process of setting that up. Treasurer's put in, brought in staff to do that, and that is designed to help local governments in the disaster area address the exact issue that we know everyone's facing. And so that is, that's what that's for. The contribution rate set by the local board is paid by the employers. If you don't set a contribution rate, then the contribution rate, the current contribution rate stays in place. Is our, is our longer interpretation of that, as long as I look at it, to make sure I'm not stating that. But you have the authority to set it at what you believe the rate to be, rate needs to be. Again, not outside of the house. The fund that you're talking about, is that only for those counties in Halleen, or is that open to everybody?
It's only for the affected counties per the statute, and those would be, I believe.
So that's, so sort of to that point, not that I'm there anymore, I'm thinking about Columbia, where there is no tax base there because percentage of that is coming out of federal game land state, local all of that. And a district of that size, a community of that size, that 1% not speaking for them, but just thanking and processing for them, I could see that being a struggle as well. But again, I'm not on that side of the house, we're just thinking about former places.
Also not on elders, but probably more of a patron question. Usually this is, you know, there's a decision here to execute or not to execute. What is the risk of not executing? Do we have a chart or anything in the system that'll show, you know, as we look at our projections out in the future, what is the impact of not doing that?
Can I ask him, as you're thinking about that, is the rate can be lowered? When we started the conversation, we said we were $5 billion for lead elders, but $11 billion for state. The state rate is 0.35 for this year. My question was, can that also be on the local government's side? Would that have a smaller shortfall than the state side? And give us the reprieve for this year, but note to your point, we're going to have to catch up later. And yes, so that would be my only question. Could that rate be a different rate, at a 1.1% and a 0.75% for this year?
I think if I could point to a picture that Gallagher showed in the previous agenda item, so this would be from agenda item 19, if we pull that presentation back up, on page three. Sorry, agenda item number 19. I think it's attachment.
Attachment 12?
Yes, page, page three. So we'll be looking here at the, just to simplify things, at the contribution rate for non-law enforcement employees. Right now, as we speak, employers are contributing 13.6% of compensation for them. To the question Mr. Ebbinghausen was asking, if the decision is couched in terms of leave it at 13.6 or increase it to 14.35, which is what the ECRIS has to do, then ultimately there are, and if you say leave it at 13.6 is not executing in those terms, I think there are two potential concerns. One maybe bigger than the other. The bigger concern is that if you look at the year 2028 and 2029 on here, these are not ECRIS numbers once we get out to 28 and 29. These are numbers that the actuary is saying, you know, based on their best estimate right now, these are the contribution rates that would be required once the time comes to do those calculations, 15.76 and 16.74%. The board probably would want to think about, how do we get from 13.6 today to 16.74 in one, two, three, four years? And so the potentially bigger concern is if you don't start getting there next year, it shortens the time that you have to get there. We do not want to be in a position, ever, I'll just speak as staff, where we have to disclose in the state's financial report and bond offering statements that we're not making an actuarially determined contribution. And so we're not putting ourselves on the path.
If you don't make the contribution contribution, that will affect not only of all local units collectively, or the perception of the state's credit rating.
But we also talked about an experience study we're generating right on, and an asset liability study that we looked at or remapped, that could in fact change our investments earnings rate. So we talked about all these pieces that are going to come together by November. My only ask is, do we consider that rate increase after we get all those pieces so we have a fuller picture? How does that look?
Well, normally, we vote the contribution rates in January. The latest we can vote them is April, because we have to notify local governments on what the contribution rate is to begin paying on July 1. And so that's, that's the timetable that we're under. And we, over the years, had lots of feedback from local governments, that the earlier they get the contribution rate, the easier it is to build into the budget process. I read the news on your budget process the last few days, and I understand the particular difficulties that your counties have. That's the timeline. It's, we do it now, or the latest, latest we could do it, it would be at your April meeting, unless you want a special meeting between us.
There is a lot, Ms. Pender, you're correct. There's a lot to happen in the next year that could move these numbers we're talking about up or down, up or down. But this is the current best estimate for Gallagher.
Again, so risk one is we affect, the AAA bond rate here could affect AAA bond rates throughout all municipalities in North Carolina. And two is a spike we see in 2029, that 16.74 would likely be higher if we froze.
That's true. It would be somewhat higher if you contribute. The 16.74 assumes that you're making all those earlier contributions. If you're not, that would be a little higher. The second risk I was going to mention though, which I guess now wouldn't be the third, is that looking at fiscal year 2026, we would, if you don't execute in your terms, if we're setting a contribution rate for fiscal year 2026, that's less than the actuarially determined amount for that one year. If we look at the law enforcement on the next page, the difference would be even greater. Be 14.35 versus 16.07, so quite a, quite a gap there from the actuarial recommendation. As Beth was saying, I think we would still be able to look at that and say, well, the board had a policy over the course of five years, we're still collecting contributions over the total of five years, at least equal to the actuarially determined amounts. That's why it's a little bit less of a concern, but it's still a concern in the sense of, how do you get from here to there based on the best estimate from Gallagher? The shorter the time you have to get from here to there, the more steep each year's increases would have to be.
Maybe a fourth concern would be, we get to set the rate for all the counties. We do not get to set it specifically for individuals. So what we do for the affected counties is what we do for everybody. I pledge to you, we are going to get that cash flow lending program up sooner than you'll believe. That money will flow next month, and hopefully there will be more behind it. And that, I think, is targeted to the specific problems that you obviously are facing. That would be my preference, my strong preference, to avoid other contingent effects that what you propose might have.
Just to build off of that, is there a reason then not to delay this vote until April so that your pledges that you've just indicated become reality? And the local governments can then say, yes, those funds are indeed available and can be taken advantage of.
Superintendent Green, the main, the main concern with delaying to April would just be logistical for the local governments to have to set their budgets. Whatever the decision is, it would take effect July 1. And so typically, as I understand it, many of you would know much better than I would, that local governments are trying to finalize their budgets in between February and April. Is what anyone say otherwise?
The earlier the better.
So that's the only, it's a logistical challenge, otherwise.
I would have to defer to the local governments as to whether that's an appropriate option.
I do think we can separate the firefighters pieces and.
So, two things. One, and I understand the logistical nightmare, it may cause some counties and local governments, but is there a way to notify, if we haven't already done so, these local governments that there's potential increase of 0.75% for non-LEOs and 1% for LEOs, just so they can, you know, work those figures in into their budgets and just be prepared if we do wait and go on to the April meeting and vote on it then? That's the first thing I have. Is that possible that we could notify them that there's a potential increase?
We'll certainly communicate to them, and if that is what the board desires, and that's, we will communicate with the employer monitor and let them know that that's under consideration.
So it's part of the policy that's already well noticed to all the local governments? People are well aware of it?
I can't just, this is almost at its worth of points, I have to add, but in the history of the retirement systems, we've only underfunded state system one time, in 2011, the general assembly was in a very difficult budget situation. We've never, we've never underfunded the local system. It's always, the board has always set the contribution rates at the actuarially recommended amount.
Mr. Chair, may I make a motion? I'd like to make a motion that our board adopts the recommendation for a benefit improvement for the firefighter and rescue squad workers pension fund from 175 to 180 per month.
I will second that.
Hearing none, let's call the roll.
Motion is Benjamin Bobzy. Second is April Pender. Treasurer Bryner.
Aye.
Crystal Certain.
Aye.
Homer Dierman.
Aye.
Jeffrey Morse.
Aye.
Superintendent Green. Nancy Vaughn.
Aye.
Pat Hurley. Wilton Weaver.
So for our April meeting, we will prepare an update on the cash flow lending program to the affected counties to continue the discussion around setting the ADAC for local government retirement systems at that time. And in the interim, we will communicate to all the counties what we expect that number may end up being, so that they can begin their planning work. Have I heard everybody's concerns that the plans go through April?
What, sir? Sorry, I was. But we're not out, we're, I'm staying positive. I think we can, I think we're going to get some to help increase, maybe as much as $2 million, but if we can get $200,000, $500,000, we can get two or three more gone in North Carolina, working toward our goal.
A different conversation.
Okay, I didn't catch all that. Perhaps I wasn't meant to.
Hey, well, no, it took the OMB that long to process 1,000 applications. That's what happened. The general assembly approved it, but it wouldn't distribute it because OMB has to process it, and it took them six, eight months to process it.
I suspect you're having a different conversation.
It'll happen as soon as it happens.
Would you mind moving yourself, please?
Yes, sir, absolutely. As long, hey, it's just like, the point is, Perry, the point is, we were able to start, we were, we were able to charge things back.
I just, sorry about that. Thank you. Apologies if we missed something, but I don't think we did. Let's move on to the court cost offset for law enforcement officers. Before we do that, can we add the vote on register of deeds and benefit plans?
My understanding is that no vote is required if the board is not recommending any changes to those plans.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you.
All right.
Court costs offset. So this is, this is not a, this is not an item for vote, it's an item, it's not just a notification. We set a, the local government's voice retirement system gets a small slice of, a very small slice of court costs that goes to fund the offset employer costs in the system. And so we have to make a determination each year based on our standard set of criteria in that court cost offset is going to be. So it's, we'll have to get it moved to 0.16% of compensation. And it is currently at 0.2 of the rate factor. 0.2 is where we are now, and it moves to 0.16 this year. So that would be the offset, just only that is given to employers for law enforcement also.
Okay, I think that concludes the majority of our business, but let's go to the final pieces. First, I want to open the floor to any board members who may have any comments, questions, or concerns you haven't addressed yet. Okay, hearing none, do I have a motion from a member of the state board to adjourn?
I don't have a motion.
Mr. Hawley, second, Ms. Winston. Call the roll, adjournment of the state board.
So the motion was, Mr. Hawley. And the second was, Winston. Treasurer Bryner.
Aye.
John Ebbinghausen.
Aye.
Josh Smith.
Aye.
Lance Brewer.
Aye.
Margaret Reader.
Aye.
Superintendent Green.
Aye.
Pat Hurley. Stacy Myers.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Moving on, do I have a motion from a member of the local board to adjourn? And second?
I'll be second. Homer Dierman is a motion. Bob Zane is the second. Treasurer Bryner.
Aye.
Mr. Pender.
Aye.
Crystal Certain.
Aye.
Jeff Morse. Jeff Morse. Lance Brewer.
Aye.
Superintendent Green.
Aye.
Nancy Vaughn.
Aye.
Pat Hurley.
Aye.
Wilton Weaver.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We are done, thank you.